On May 18th, the town of East Fishkill Planning Board Meeting will come to order. And I will read the roll call. Lori G.
Present.
Ed Maiochi.
Here.
Christopher Tamalunas. Chris is here.
Present.
Richard Campbell.
Here.
Sarah Bledsoe.
Here.
Craig Arco.
Here.
And I'm John Eichman. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. So the upcoming meeting dates will be June 8th, 2021, and July 13th, 2021. Based on the recent findings by the CDC, I think we could expect to probably meet once again in person at Town Hall for the next meetings. So if if there are any concerns about that, please shoot me an email. But I think that with some of the appropriate protocols in place, it will be safe to once again meet in person. We have minutes from the meeting of April 20th, 2021 that were dispersed. Did everybody have an opportunity to review them? I'll accept a motion to accept those minutes.
No move.
Thank you, Lori.
Second.
Second, thank you very much. John Cutler has joined the meeting. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay. First order of business is Montage. Montage is going to be making a brief presentation on the project. There are a number of new board members that haven't had an opportunity to become familiar with this over a period of years that it's been with us. So we're eager to hear a little bit of an update and then we'll be considering ultimately the review of the subdivision plan at some future meeting date. But, Michael, if you could turn that over to a Montage representative.
Sure. So I promoted Rick O'Rourke from the Montage team. And Rick, is there anybody else from your team that should be promoted?
Yes, Mark Canoli, who is the Senior Vice President for Development also, will be speaking and making a presentation and providing background as to the proposal.
Mark, if you're here, can you please raise your hand?
All I hear is a dog.
Sorry. That's me.
Thank you, Mr. Cunningham.
There he is. Okay. All right. Well, good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Thank you very much for this opportunity to refresh everyone's memory for those that have been around for a while about this application. And of course, to apprise the new members of the board what this is all about. As I said, Mark Canoli, who is the Senior Vice President for Development for Char-Bell, will be explaining some of the history, but I think it's important to just set a framework in terms of where we are in the SECRE review process. I know that a finding statement was issued some time ago in connection with the proposal. There were alternatives that were examined in detail. There was a collaboration with Scott Bryant and the Engineering Department to try to figure out the best way to provide for some of the necessary infrastructure, particularly water and sewer. And my understanding is that this is essentially a continued public hearing. It's been continued for a very long period of time. But we will be moving in that direction shortly. And where we are presently in the approval process, as the secret review, the secret process has concluded, our next step would be to move in the direction of preliminary subdivision approval. So with that, what I would like to do is turn it over to Mark, and I'm sure he'll be able to explain the history as well as where we are and where we want to be. So, Mark, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. O'Rourke.
Not to, just to interrupt you for a second, Mark. Michael, this is a continued public hearing. If this is technically a continued public hearing, then we would need to open the public hearing.
It's works.
Was it, was it actually adjourned to a date uncertain because then it would have had to be advertised?
I, thank you. Go ahead, Michelle.
I think the applicant's here as a request of the board to update the board on its current progress. So I think there are going to be public hearings in the future. So I think determining right now whether to open the public hearing or not, I don't think we have to get into that. I think we can just hear the presentation tonight. And
It'd be fine.
And then we'll, and then we'll read, re-advertise at the time.
Yes, we'll re-advertise in the public. They'll absolutely be able to comment on this.
Very good.
Thank you, Michael.
Thank you, Mr. O'Rourke. And Michelle, I agree there. We did keep the public hearing open on the preliminary years ago. Ms. Gee might recall that. I'll touch on that in a second. So this is really more of a request as an update, if you will. And Mr. Cunningham, Amy Bombiari from Danes-Tecosa is also available. If I need her, she'll raise her hand, but I doubt we'll need any technical items, but she's also on the call. So you were right, Mr. Chairman. The project did start a few years ago. In fact, it was 20, it was 2005. We were in front of then the Lead Agency Planning Board with a project much different than what you have today. That was a combination of some senior housing and some market rate housing. The unit count was up, up towards almost 300 units. It was a much different project than you have now. Long story short, in 2017, we worked with the town board at the time. That project did not go forward. The zoning did not go forward. So in, in late 27, 2007, we decided to proceed members of the board with a, as of right, if you will, subdivision under your, under your CRD zoning. We submitted an application that started in 2008 with a scoping document. We then had a scoping document received and started the draft EIS process. That got us through, believe it or not, 2011. There was some time there. We had some public hearings mid, mid-year. And then we were able to conclude that part of the process. But we were working under a draft supplemental. So at that point, we had to take the draft supplemental to a final supplemental, which got us into early 2013. And then we had several amendments. And by the end of 2017, we had a notice of completion that, that year in the middle of June, of June 2017. And that's when we started drafting our finding statement. So a lot of the names I see tonight, Mr. Campbell, Mr. Arco, I think I see Ms. Bledsoe. I don't think you were there. And Mr. Tammy Lunas, did I get that correct? I don't know that you, you were part of that process because you look like new faces. We, we finalized our draft and our finding statement was adopted in November of 2019. Okay, so what you have now, what you've been, what, what we're presenting is a 122 lot cluster subdivision. It was the preferred alternative that worked its way through all those years of planning and analysis to, to where we are today. During that process, we worked with the town on designing concepts for dealing with the water and sewer. Long story short, towards the end of that process, the town came to us and said, you know, we have a couple of ideas that really want to work with you on. And that included sending sewer to a town sewer plant. At first, we looked at Hopewell Junction, I believe, Mr. Bryant. And then it turned out that the best alternative and what was decided was that we would run sewer from our project. And from what I understand, the adjacent project Summit Woods to the Four Corners existing sewer treatment plant, which turned out to be the least impact on the environment and turned out to be the best alternative to deal with both water and sewer for both projects. I should have said sewer for both projects. We also realized that there was an opportunity to take the wells that we have on site and interconnect them with the town system. We're going to analyze that during this process to provide an additional water source in town that could become a public water system as well. So I have a plan, Mr. Cunningham. If you want to take a look at that, I can run through the project with, with the location, a quick overview on the number of lots. The benefits that we see we're providing to the town with some of the late changes that were made with regard to the sewer improvement. We're also improving the intersection of Route 216 and Route 52 to deal with a really dangerous curve there. We have the land in that intersection under contract. So I can touch on those things, but I don't know if you want a, a, an exhibit while we speak.
I'll leave that up to the board, whether they'd like to see your plan.
Well, it's, it's here. I can, I can, you know, I can leave it on any page here. So what you have here is a cluster subdivision. Route 52 is to the north. And 216 intersects with what we're now showing is a proposed traffic circle. We're working with the New York State Department of Transportation. From what I understand, that's the new alternative that they're, they're considering versus a signal. We're open to either. But you know, that also adds a nice traffic calming element and provides good circulation at a very dangerous curve and intersection that currently exists today. But as you can see, the road, that main spine road enters the project, crosses one wetland over into the first few lots. Again, the second crossing, these crossings have been approved by the Army Corps and are currently under review by the DEC. We're looking to get back in front of them quickly with the final details they need to, to process their permits. The second crossing gets you into a larger part of the development. Let's call that Phase Two. There you have to the north of the spine road, the proposed wells, those are existing high-producing, high-quality wells. Those would be the wells that we would tie into the town system. As you continue down that road, there's a little loop, a little cul-de-sac. And then in between those lots are open spaces which accommodate much of the storm drainage that, that we need to accommodate our runoff. That last crossing connects into the last phase, if you will. Again, there's a cluster of homes there. And then it connects along that property line, along the southerly, southeastern border with Summit Woods. There we show a connection to Summit Woods and a connection that would run all the way out, all the way out to the other intersection of Route 52. So in essence, you would have one main, what was considered back then as a spine road and a master plan road that provided better access to two, two intersections on Route 52. Those lots range in size from 80 feet wide to 90 feet wide to anywhere from 110 feet deep to 120 feet deep. We're talking about three and four bedroom, single-family homes. It's been a long time that we, we looked at the comp sales for new construction. So I know the document talks about homes that were in the $475,000 range. I doubt that that number holds true today. I think they would be more in the low fives to mid-fives at a starting point. But we would take a better look at that and, and, and give you better details of that if you needed that during the preliminary subdivision process. So you, you may know, on April 29th, we submitted five copies to the town of, of what looks like a 66 sheet plan set which provides all the details, the grading, a lot of things that I know will, will get comments on with Mr. Sataro and his group and Mr. Bryant. And we'll provide those details as we move forward. But tonight was really just to give you an overview to, to the new board members and some of the familiar faces with where we are. You should know that the Army Corps permit for the force main application line that would run up 216 and up Phillips Road, that was approved back in January of 2019. We did have a FEMA issue that we dealt with as well with your, your local flood administrator, floodplain administrator. Those issues were dealt with. We have approvals from FEMA. And I think that's really it in terms of where we are in the process. We are working with our neighbor in any way that, that the board would request. We would, we have a good relationship with Summit Woods and Mr. Garen. And earlier today, we spoke with the town engineer and town staff regarding our willingness to participate in a study that's needed to evaluate the capacity of the existing Four Corners wastewater treatment plant. We're willing to participate in that and we're waiting for more details. So with that, Mr. O'Rourke, I think that's really the, the basic big picture overview. If there are more details, I'm here to provide that. And as I said, we have an engineer on hand if needed.
Thank you, Mark. If I may, I guess procedurally where we are with the continued public hearing, of course, it would be necessary for us to comply with the zoning code, place a sign on a property, take care of all of the procedural prerequisites for it to be scheduled for continuance. And so we would work with the board and with Michelle and Michael to see what's the best date for us to proceed.
Yeah. And just so the board is aware, we do have our documents posted online for some of the new members. We could send that around, I guess, Mr. Bryant or whoever's controlling, Mr. Eichman, rather, the chairman, we could send an email around with that link to those documents so that if you did find the need to catch up on some of the history, it's all there. It's all posted. We did remove the sign, Mr. O'Rourke, years ago because we were asked to. We got to a certain level during SECRE, but whatever's required, we're, we're ready to, you know, order a new sign, put that up and, and submit the required sets to the town planning staff as soon as they're ready to, to accept us.
Okay. Thank you very much for the presentation. Do any board members have any questions for Mr. O'Rourke or Mr. Canoli?
I think just to refresh our memory that with the change to the wastewater treatment, is there, is there any change to the plan for what will happen? You, you have a, a shared connection for your second egress through Summit. Is there any change to the direction of what will happen if you go first versus them going first in, in all of those plans? Or have they remained essentially the same?
Ms. Gee, that's a good question. They remained essentially the same. Where we had proposed to run sewer down through that main spine road to connect. If you recall, the DEC thought that their location for a regional treatment plant was best. We both had sites set aside for that. But when we decided to go together and connect our force main, where it converges at 216 and heads up Phillips Road, we then both have a pump station to a certain point, and then it pumps there. Doesn't change the underground gravity sewer system, doesn't change how we serve the water. In fact, it leaves an open parcel in the front of our property that no longer needs a wastewater treatment plant, and the same happens on the adjacent site.
And is there still some sort of agreement so that with whichever development goes first and is putting in all of the, the piping down 216, there's, there's some sort of agreement for shared cost or something along those lines?
We, we still have a developer's agreement with our neighbor that allows exactly what you're saying. In fact, one of the comments during the process was that we had a cul-de-sac, if you will, and no emergency access to 215, 260, Route 52, I'm sorry. What we do, what we do have is a developer's agreement to work together to provide at least an emergency connection if we were to proceed before the, our adjacent neighbor and then vice versa. They have the same right to use our property to do the same in the other direction.
Thank you.
No problem.
Are there any other questions? Well, if not, again, thank you, Mr. O'Rourke, Mr. Canoli. Appreciate it. And we look forward to seeing you again in the future.
Thank you, Mr. Eichman, Chairman.
Thank you very much.
Members of the board. Have a good evening.
Good night.
Yeah.
Okay. The next item of business is the Forest Year project. A three lot subdivision on 4.34 acres. We are going to open a public hearing tonight, but we'll adjourn it and continue it next week. Or next meeting, pardon me, next month. But I'd accept a motion at this time to open the public hearing.
So moved.
Second by Chris. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay.
Hi, good evening, folks.
Good evening, Michael.
Hi, Michael Esty here. How are you? So tonight, yeah, we're here for the Forest Year subdivision and off of Country Lane. Officially been advertised as a public hearing. We made an initial presentation to the board last month. There were, the, the, the plan was effectively acceptable to the board, but there were some things that needed clarification. One of them being the location of a wetland on the rear side of the parcel. So we, we got that delineated. We show that it didn't affect the lot count for the project, which was the concern of Michelle's office. So we're here tonight making a presentation relative to, again, a three lot subdivision, just for the board's knowledge. We went out there and performed our soil testing, perks and deeps, and have an application moving forward relative to the planning board. So we know that, you know, we're, we're, you know, the, the soil areas that we show, the septic areas we show in the soil areas are going to be acceptable, you know? So that's, that's where we stand relative to the plan.
Where do you stand with, with delineating the wetlands at this point, Michael?
We provided that wetland flagging on the backside of the property. So we did detail that it's been flagged and shown on the plan along with its buffer.
Okay, got it.
Michael, has anyone, has the highway department been out yet to verify? We called up and we're scheduling that period. There, there's no issues regarding site distance here. But we will make sure that walkthrough happens with the highway superintendent prior to final. But, you know, it's effectively, Country Lane is a short cul-de-sac. So there's two additional houses on the end of Country Lane. This would add an additional three, 30 miles an hour limit. So I don't see that being any kind of an issue. So.
At this time, if there are any members of the public who would like to speak for or against the project?
Do we want to bring up the map, Michelle, since it's a public hearing? Do we have that?
Give me a second. I'm bringing it up.
I guess while Michelle's bringing that up too, I, I'd like to speak quickly regarding the, the hearing. The notice was sent out relative to previous notices that we've sent. And the meeting being at the Town Hall. And I understand that there was a bit of an issue tonight with a potential property owner coming actually to the Town Hall. We, we, we don't know if it's a Zoom meeting or not. Obviously, the protocols are changing very rapidly. I, I did hear the discussion at the beginning of the meeting. I, I would think that the hope that the board wouldn't find a default, you know, certainly in the advertisement. There's the, the ability to, for certainly that property owner to, to log in online and have that discussion in terms of any kind of concerns they have. But, you know, I also don't want to put our project in jeopardy. Okay. Well, you know, this protocol has been going on for probably, I want to say at least four months, maybe five. And, and I would suspect that if there's any other projects that went through the same protocol and received approvals with this kind of an advertisement, that would be an issue for you as well. So, I mean, we'd like to close the hearing tonight if possible. But, you know, that's, that's, that's certainly, again, up to the board. So.
And Michael, I think we're gonna have to keep it open just because that, I think, is, you know, a, a part of the notice that's very important. So I think you'll, the public hearing needs to be adjourned to the next meeting.
Okay, so you're, you're guaranteeing me that the other projects that have seen repool in the last four months have indicated on their hearing notices that it's subject to a Zoom meeting?
I don't have them all in front of me right now. It's just
I mean, because I was, I was, that would basically render those approvals, that would be a default within that notice, and that would be a problem with those projects.
Michael, I would have, I would have to say that we haven't had anybody who has indicated there's any problem. And tonight, we did have one individual, I think, one or two possibly, who did come to Town Hall. As Michael Cunningham indicated, it's, there are two important things in the notice, and one is date and time, and the other is location. And sadly, we didn't make that. You know, it's unfortunate. But I'm afraid we're gonna have to keep it open until next month.
Okay, all right. Again, I, I just, I don't particularly have an issue keeping it open on that. But if, if there have been other projects, I assume the town want to put themselves in an issue as well, but that's fine.
I see a person on the chat saying that they're here. Is that the person? It looks like a Henry who had wanted to join us tonight. They're on, they're on the meeting right now.
Right. So I, I think, you know, we'll get to the public comment section first, but, and this may be one person. I don't know if there are others, you know, who would have wanted to come to Town Hall as well. I think too, just in this case, I know it's a smaller project with to be safe. I think we should wait one extra month. But everyone who's on tonight can speak.
And we asked the person from the, the public if, in fact, they were the ones that showed up at Town Hall?
I'm sure. I think they've already indicated they have, but I think it's not, you know, necessarily controlling about what's going to happen. I, I think we've determined that it should stay open another month just because the notice itself said that it was going to be in Town Hall. And we understand it's tough and it's based on prior notices that have been done, but, um, we, we have to sort of deal with it, you know.
Yeah, I just, I want to make sure that the other projects that, again, have, have come to this, you know, have dealt with this protocol indicate the same because, you know, there could have been an issue with that too. But, you know, I don't want to feel that would be falsely penalized because, you know, this COVID issue, I mean, I know at the beginning of the meeting, talked about the fact that there'll be actually a, an in-person meeting next month, which is great. That protocol could, came out three weeks ago. We could have been meeting today at the Town Hall. I don't know, you know, so, you know, again, I don't, I don't feel like we should be penalized for that. But again, I don't want there to be the fault with the project. So.
Well, I also, I also don't think you're being penalized though, because nobody is, is saying that they're going to vote against this project based on a default on the notice. It's just that the public hearing is going to be adjourned one month.
Mike, Michael Esty?
Yeah.
Is this a wooded lot?
Is it a wooded lot? Primarily, yes.
Just wooded or clear already?
It's effectively wooded, yeah.
Well, you can't remove trees until after October anyway. So what's the big rush?
Well, it's not an issue with the rush. It's becomes an issue of procedure. Scott, I just want to make sure we're not being treated differently. Now, the projects may have been in the past during this protocol. You understand?
You're not. You're the only one that we know if we didn't do the notice properly. And so it's going to be adjourned another month. So you're, you're the only one we know of in this situation.
Okay, all right. We'll, we'll verify that. Thank you.
Do we, do we have members of the public who would like to speak?
Yes. So if anyone would like to speak, please hit the raise your hand function. If you called, then hit star nine.
When you're given the opportunity to speak, if you would please give your name and address, that would be helpful to us.
Hello?
Hello, we can hear you.
Hi, how are you? My name is Henry. How you doing?
Excellent.
Well, like you guys know, we only received a paper saying that the Town Hall, I, I heard you guys talking about that. The meeting was supposed to be there at the Town Hall tonight. Now, also, it said in the letter that we were going to get a picture of how the subdivision, the subdivision was going to be done. We didn't get anything at all. Now, my concern is I live right next to it. My concern is privacy and, you know, what are the hours, construction and stuff like that? I'm not opposed to it. I just want to make sure everything runs, you know, so it, it doesn't disturb the neighborhood at all. So what, what, what are the guarantees on that?
So Michael Gillespie, do you want to respond to that?
Sure. So what we're proposing again is three lot subdivision, which is in, you know, in tune with exactly what's out there, which effectively, you know, one acre individual lots. So in terms of construction, the construction that it's going to be involved is construction of the homes themselves. We've still got some work to do relative to securing Health Department approval and things such as that. So, you know, we're still a few months out. So, you know, we're still a few months out from, from, you know, actually seeing, you know, things happen on the property as well as maybe some other requirements and regs that are out there. But, you know, and the applicant himself is the one that's actually proposing to actually construct the homes. Are you, just to be clear, are you Vasquez?
Yeah, Vasquez, yes.
Okay, so you are at the corner of.
Lomala and Country Lane.
Country Lane and Lomala. So I would say, based upon the map we have here, you're approximately 100 and your property line away from where the closest construction is proposed is probably 150 feet, which is the edge of the septic system on that lot. So, you know, in terms of hours of construction, so there is some buffer area there. There's actually an existing unpaved road or trail or access way that goes to the gun.
Yeah, they were there too today because they wanted to talk about that, but I got nothing to do with them.
Yeah. Yeah, there is a dirt driveway between you and them. I don't know how prevalent they are in terms of actually using that. Again, but speaking to our project, you're about 150 way, 50 feet away from the closest point of construction. And the applicant is the gentleman who's actually gonna build the homes. I think the homes will be built based upon market consideration. I'm gonna make, I'm gonna throw it out there that presumptively, that there'll be no construction, the work being done on Sundays. If there's a caveat that wants to be placed on the map based upon this board, I don't think there'll be an issue with that. But, you know, again, the project meets all zoning considerations, access wise, well supply, sewer disposal, and meets the requirements of the town at the end of the day.
Oh, okay. Now, also, I know you have, will now have nothing to do with the road maintenance and stuff like that, as it is. The section of my road, Lomala and Country are pretty much bad. And I understand when you do construction, you're gonna have a lot of heavy equipment running between pump trucks, concrete trucks for the concrete, lumber trucks, and whatever else you're gonna need. So, I don't know if that's on the budget. I know you probably have nothing to do with it, but the town should consider on that, like after the fact that the house is done to repave the roads, because they only did it to the, the train tracks and the other side. Never touch these areas.
Well, I guess I would say that the existing status or the existing, you know, status of the existing road is, you know, our roads are probably something, I can have a discussion with the highway superintendent when I'm out there looking at access points. But, you know, I've been out there a number of times myself. I don't see, I've seen a lot worse roads in town.
I know, but you could see also the party was paved or not.
Right, but we can have that discussion with the highway superintendent to see what, what may be down the road there, so.
Also, on my property, I have the pool, which is, you say it's 150 feet where the construction is gonna be from the property line. My pool is in that side where the other driveway is that goes to the house all the way in the back.
Okay.
So I'm just concerned about the privacy, you know, maintaining the privacy on that area. I don't know how the house is gonna be built. I don't know, you know what I'm saying? Like the front, the back, or whatever. Like I was, like I respect my neighbors' properties and privacy. I would like to say.
I will say that the location of this home on this lot, which is largely governed by zoning, but probably more the location of the septic system, is fairly well-defined and is completely on the other side of the lot from where your home and your pool is. This, and we don't know exactly what type of homes are being installed here as, as the town acquires, there's a proposed plot plan that gets prepared relative to a building permit being issued. I would say beyond just the limits of construction, the, the limits of the anticipated disturbance, which usually is a little bigger than that, is, again, at least 100 feet away from the house from the existing driveway. So there's 100 foot of green space or existing tree area that's gonna remain, at least as per our plan, from the driveway to where the house is gonna be, which is a pretty extensive natural buffer area.
Okay, now that, that sounds good. Okay, I'm satisfied for that. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there other members of the public, Michael? Michael Cunningham, you are muted right now.
Looks like we might have lost.
Looks like you might be frozen too.
I think so.
Frozen on the internet.
Mr. Rodriguez, if you'd wait a minute, we're gonna see if we can get Michael Cunningham to get you access to speak.
Jackie, if you're on, it looks like you received host rights, so you may be able to promote Mr. Rodriguez. I'm trying to promote someone right now.
Excellent.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Nothing.
I think we can hear you now.
No, I did make you host.
I think the phone number is 916-873-6699. I think you're allowed to speak now.
Yes, hello. My name is Pete Sobek. I am at 12 Country Lane at the end of the road. I, I think a lot of stuff was just addressed with the prior gentleman. I would just like to voice my support for continuing this for a month, so we can actually do this in person without all these technical glitches. This is a little difficult right now doing it this way.
Okay.
Is there anybody else that wants to speak?
And is Mr. Rodriguez still there and would he like to speak? There we go. Yes, he does want to speak.
I don't see his hand raised.
It's okay.
Ah, there it is, okay.
Good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
A good, good evening, everyone. Apologies, you're gonna hear ambient sound. I'm actually at my part-time job, so couldn't go into the secluded area. So I'm looking at the project, at least briefly, with the maps, and I do raise the same concerns indicated by Henry regarding the privacy in the area. As you know, I currently own the property that's on the flood plain directly behind the project. And I don't foresee it being an issue as I'm really four acres away from where the project would probably exist, but wasn't sure what their ideas were in terms of the slope. Are they looking just to develop, obviously, similar to the other plots that are there that have at the peak level of the structure? So I didn't know how far back it would go into that slope area.
So this is. This is Michael Estes, the project.
Can we mute Mr. Rodriguez while Michael responds to that, Michelle?
Rodriguez, if you can hear us, there it goes.
There we go. Okay, so hopefully everybody can hear. So, Mr. Rodriguez, one of the things that occurred on this property, it's actually almost a four and a half acre property, but there's extensive flood plain on the backside as well as significant slope. You're looking at the plan, it actually gets outlined. We were hoping it would be a little like a gray, but it's, it's actually outlined in black. So we are keeping all the home septic areas and so forth toward Country Lane in order to avoid the steep slope and any flood plain that's in the back. We are not looking for a flood plain development permit. All of this is proposed on the upside or high side of each one of these lots.
And Mr. Rodriguez, if you, okay, I think that you found that to be an acceptable response. Are there any other members of the public who'd like to speak? One more question from Mr. Rodriguez, Michael Cunningham.
There's a road that I utilize. It's currently a gravel road that goes pretty much to the extent of my property, and it's a common road that's shared due to contracts that we have with prior developments. And I wasn't sure how that was gonna be impacted in any way. I don't think I own it, but I do have permission to use it. So I wasn't sure what the future plan would be regarding that gravel well, road, which is my ingress and exit entryway. I'm sorry.
Do you, do you have a response for that, Michael?
I do. So, yeah, so that, that area is on, let's call it the north side of proposed lot three. It's been identified, there's a call out relative to the easement right of way that they have rights over. It is an easement over lot number three. But we are staying away from that with, with all development proposals, including even our well, which is tucked up close to the north corner of the easement and the property, but we are, we are staying away from that altogether. That will remain as is.
Okay, any other public comment? Are there any questions from board members or professionals? Okay, well then, per our earlier discussion, we will extend this to next month. Michael, we'll hopefully get everything wrapped up. I will accept a motion to adjourn the public hearing.
So moved.
Thank you. Thank you very much. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, carries.
So, so just that I'm clear, we don't have to re-advertise. It just gets adjourned to the next month's meeting and that's it.
Is that correct, Michael or Michelle? Does any further advertisement need to take place?
What does the sign say on it, Michael?
It says that there is a public hearing.
At town hall, right? So if it's gonna be a town hall next, next month, then it would, then it would suffice. Then the existing sign up would suffice. If it, if it doesn't give the location, then you would need to say town hall.
Yeah, it actually, I think about it yesterday, actually says it on the sign that's at town hall 330, because that's like pre-printed material. But we'll update the date, you know, so that people understand that obviously it's a June meeting at the town.
Okay, great.
Great.
Okay.
Thank you, Michael.
And I get to see you all next month. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is Marrow Crane. We did adjourn, not adjourn, we were actually closed the public hearing last meeting. But if there's someone here on behalf of the applicant wondering if, like, if there are any comments, any changes that have occurred since the last time we heard from you? And in particular, maybe mention the status of the variance that you were working on.
If I may, Mr. Chairman Rick O'Rourke, on behalf of Marrow Crane. The application remains the same. I think, if I'm not mistaken, we're at the point now where a determination of significance under CIGR would be appropriate, and with that, we could move forward with the application.
Are there any questions or comments from any board members or professionals? If not, then we do have a neg deck prepared. I will read through and summarize most of it. The full copy can be found in the planning office anytime. But in order to expedite things, I'll summarize things. The description of the action is, the proposed action would result in the construction of a crane equipment yard with a 26,000 square foot administrative building and associated parking. The environmental issues identified as relevant were land use, zoning, and public policy, natural resources, surface waters and wetlands, stormwater, visual, and other. Under land use, zoning, and public policy, the proposed project meets all site plan review standards set forth in the town zoning law and is consistent with the stated public policy goal enumerated in the Town of East Fishkill comprehensive plan, which is to identify land with marketable sites and good interstate highway access in order to attract high-value industry. Industrial zoning shall continue to be maintained near the interstate. Accordingly, the planning board finds that no significant adverse environmental impact impacts related to land use, zoning, and public policy are anticipated for the project. Under natural resources, the project site is within the range of known instances of Indiana bat and has the potential to contain bog turtle habitat. To avoid disturbance to Indiana bat, any proposed tree removal must occur between October 1st and March 31st. And the applicant has prepared a bog turtle mitigation plan aligned with New York State DEC guidelines to avoid disturbance to any potential bog turtles and bog turtle habitat on the site. With the above referenced measures in place, the proposed project would not be expected to result in any significant impacts to threatened or endangered species or natural resources. Under surface waters and wetlands, the site does contain U.S. Corps of Engineers, New York State DEC, and town-regulated wetlands. No disturbances proposed within the wetlands on site, however, as part of the bog turtle mitigation plan, some wetland buffer restoration is proposed within the New York State DEC adjacent area. Since the proposed adjacent area disturbance is related to habitat restoration, a minor disturbance to the adjacent area will not require a wetland disturbance permit from New York State DEC. Therefore, the proposed project would not be expected to result in any significant adverse impacts to surface waters or wetlands at the site. Under stormwater, the proposed project will provide stormwater quality and quantity treatment in accordance with the requirements of the Town of East Fishkill and New York State DEC. Under visual, the proposed project would result in the installation of a 136-foot crane on the project site. The crane will be located in the rear of the project site and will only be partially visible above the tree line. The associated 26,000 square foot building and outdoor storage piles will also be located on the rear of the property and would not be visible from Lime, Lime Kill Road or I-84 or any nearby properties. The proposed crane will be painted a light gray to blend into the sky, would not be expected to significantly alter the visual character of the site or surrounding industrial area. Therefore, the proposed project would not be expected to result in any significant adverse visual impacts. No other significant potential impacts were identified, excuse me, as a result of the proposed project. I'll accept a motion to approve the neg deck.
Go move.
Thank you, Lori.
Second.
Second.
Thank you, Chris. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, passed. We also have a resolution of approval. Site plan, Marrow Crane, name of applicant, Marrow Equipment Company LLC, location 216 Lime Kill Road. The above referenced applicant applied to the Town of East Fishkill Planning Board for site plan approval for a crane equipment yard and 26,000 square foot administrative building. The applicant applied for a 20-foot height variance, received approval from the Architectural Review Council. A public hearing on the site plan was opened on April 20th and closed on May 18th. Actually, it was closed on April 20th. We want to correct that. And proposed action is unlisted action under CIGR. Planning Board declared their intent to be lead agency on February 16th. The Planning Board adopted a negative declaration on May 18th, 2021. Planning Board approves the site plan, subject to the following conditions: satisfactory resolution of the comments in the CPL site memo, approval of a full SWIP by the town's consulting engineer, approval of a 20-foot height variance to maintain an outdoor storage pile of. of 30 feet in an industrial zone from the East Fishkill Zoning Board Appeals, approval from Dutchess County Department of Behavioral and Community Health, satisfactory resolution of any NY, New York State D E C conditions related to bog turtle mitigation on the site and New York State D E C approval of the bog turtle mitigation plan, and an escrow in the amount of $7,500 to be replenished as needed for environmental monitor. Are there any other conditions that need to be added? If not, then be it further resolved that within five business days of the adoption of this resolution, the chair or other duly authorized member of the planning board shall cause a copy of this resolution to be filed with the town clerk and a copy sent to the applicant owner. And I have a motion to approve the resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, Carrie. Thank you, Mr. Rourke.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Motion and who made the second?
I've made the second.
That's, I'm sorry, who's I?
Richard.
Rich, okay, sorry, I can't see.
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Okay, the next item is Perfect Pause, 92 Heisner Mountain Road. This is for a decision. And if the applicant is here, it might be helpful particularly to some of the new board members to just have a very brief overview of the project.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, hi, how are you? So my name's Jessica DeRosa. I've been working with the town for almost about a year now. We're looking to open a dog daycare in an existing building. The building is 5,000 square feet and sits out on about 1.75 acres of land. We have gotten all the variances from the town for the property lines. Basically, we're looking to run a daily daycare for parents to be able to drop off their dogs before they go to work and pick them up after. We plan on running a very structured daycare, so it's not just a place where you drop off your dog and it's free play all day. It will be a set schedule where there's specific drop offs and specific pickup times. The dogs will be given free play. They'll be given outdoor time in small groups, so there's not a lot of dogs outside at one time. And then as well as enrichment activities to keep them mentally and physically stimulated without overstimulating them.
Excellent. There any questions from any of the board members? If not, then I'll proceed to a resolution. And once again, I'll summarize everything. Name of the site plan is Perfect Pause. Name of applicant, Jessica DeRosa. The location is 92 Heisner Mountain Road. The applicant has applied for change of use and amended site plan approval for a dog care business with an outdoor run. Zoning Board of Appeals has approved the request by Jessica DeRosa for a 120 foot in variance, a 101 foot sideline variance, and a 114 foot sideline variance from the requirements under section 194 dash 55.1 of the zoning ordinance. Planning Board approves the change of use and amended site plan to allow a dog care business, subject to the following conditions: installation of fenced dog run on the south side of the property to the rear of the mental building and away from existing residential structures. Number two, sound absorbing material shall be installed within the building and around the perimeter of any outdoor runways and exercise pens. Number three, an escrow of $1,500 shall be held by the building department in escrow for one year from the date of certificate of occupancy to be used to hire an acoustical engineer or qualified noise expert should there be any discernible noise emanating from the property or other complaints. Are there any other conditions? If not, be it further resolved that within five business days of the adoption of this resolution, the chair or other duly authorized member of the planning board shall cause a copy of this resolution to be filed with the town clerk and a copy sent to the applicant owner. And I have a motion approving this resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Richard and John Cutler was second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, Carrie, Jessica, thank you very much and best of luck to you.
Thank you guys so much. Have a good night.
You too. Last item on the agenda, Stone Ridge Commons. We have, so we we closed the public hearing, but I'm wondering if we have any comments from Amy as to any updates?
Nothing has really updated since the last time you saw the project. We are still working with the town to finalize the sewer design, but other than that, we have a submission into the DOT for their approval of or their acceptance of the proposed offsite sidewalk, but we haven't heard anything back from them yet.
Do any board members or professionals have any questions or comments?
Moved.
If there are no questions or comments, we'll proceed to a neg deck for the project. Town of East Fishville Planning Board has determined that the proposed action described below will not have a significant effect on the environment and a draft environmental impact statement will not be prepared. The proposed action would result in the construction of 51 multifamily apartments and associated parking. The environmental issues identified as relevant included land use zoning and public policy, natural resources, visual resources, community services, stormwater and traffic. Under land zone, land, excuse me, land use zoning and public policy, the proposed project would require a transitional zone special permit per section 194 dash 46 dot 10 of the East Fishkill zoning code and would introduce a new type of residential use in this section of the Route 52 corridor. The proposed use is consistent with the transitional zone special permit and would be in conformance with the intent and requirements of the special permit. The proposed project meets all site plan review standards set forth in the town zoning law and is consistent with the stated public policy goal enumerated in the town of East Fishkill's comprehensive plan, which is to maintain diverse housing environments and options within East Fishkill. Accordingly, the planning board finds that no significant adverse environmental impacts related to land use zoning and public policy are anticipated from the project. Under natural resources, the New York State Department of Environmental Conservation Resource Mapper identified the potential for Indiana bat to be located on the project site to avoid disturbance of Indiana bat. The tree removal will occur between the time, between the dates of October 1st through March 31st or unless authorized by New York State D E C. Further, lighting on the site will minimize light pollution and will be designed not to spill over on neighboring properties or interfere with potential bat forging habitat. With the above referenced measures in place, the planning board finds the proposed project will not result in any significant impacts to threatened or endangered species or natural resources. Under visual resources, although the proposed building would appear larger than many of the surrounding buildings, the new buildings would not be incompatible with their location along a heavily traveled suburban traffic corridor across from an industrial park. To buffer views of the proposed residential buildings from the adjacent subdivision, the applicant has proposed a landscaped berm between the parking area between building two and the closest residential lot as well as a landscaped buffer of approximately 150 feet between building one and the closest residential lot. While the proposed new buildings would introduce a visual change to this section of Route 52 and would be partially visible from several lots within the adjacent subdivision, with the screening and landscaping in place, the proposed project would not be expected to result in any significant adverse visual impacts to neighborhood character or the surrounding uses. Under community services, let me make sure that I'm going to the right page. An analysis of the potential impact to the Wappinger Central School District was completed using industry standards and information obtained from the district. The study was done and the period from 2011 through 2017 had a decreasing district enrollment each year. Based on the past survival rates, a steady decrease is predicted for the entire period from the 2017-18 school year through the 2026-27 school year. Based on the studies and the declining enrollments at W C S D, a worst case potential addition of 13 school age children spread over K to 12 grades is projected for the proposed project. The addition of 13 school age children spread over K to 12 grades would not be expected to result in a significant adverse impact in W C S D. Stormwater, the proposed project will not result in any significant adverse stormwater impacts. Transportation, a traffic impact study was prepared by JMC Consulting for the proposed project. The applicant proposes to install a New York, a New York 52 eastbound left turn lane by restriping an existing painted median and is willing to extend the existing John Jay High School, New York 52 westbound left turn lane to the taper of the proposed eastbound left turn lane. This extension of the existing John Jay High School of New York 52 westbound turn lane would provide an additional storage length for use by vehicles during the observed short periods of queuing along New York 52. The proposed development's traffic is not anticipated to significantly impact the existing short periods of queuing along New York 52. Additionally, the New York State DOT in coordination with the Wappinger Central School District will review and implement the traffic signal time improvements at the existing New York 52 slash John Jay High School driveway traffic signal to improve the traffic flow during the morning school arrival period. With the construction and installation of the proposed improvements described above, the proposed project is not expected to cause any significant impact to overall traffic operations in the area. Therefore, the proposed project will not have any significant adverse impacts to traffic or transportation. And there are no other significant potential impacts that were identified as a result of the proposed project. Sorry, that was a lot of information.
Can, can we just have a, it's all right, can we just have a little bit of discussion? I have a question. On the neg deck. Michelle, I, and I think we had asked about whether or not we had documentation about the nature of the commercial buildings that were originally proposed. And if there was any restrictions in our approval or in that original plan that required them to be of a certain, I'm going to call it facade or architecture.
So, so I, I was not in the office today, but I had folks that were in the office looked through the minutes and the resolution and they did not find any specific restriction related to the architecture.
Okay. And the reason I ask is because I, I feel like this is, it's on a state road. It's a, it seems like an appropriate use for the area and the region that it's in. It's a type of housing that we need in the community. Where I really struggle is with the, with the appearance of this building. It doesn't seem like it's, it's, it fits very well with the rest of the neighborhood. And I know there might have been some intention to have buildings similar to this nearby, but none of those exist right now. I think you have to go quite a ways down the road, maybe ortho associates is the, is the closest one that looks similar to it. And this is a residential building versus a business building. So I'm struggling, John, with the visual resources portion of this neg deck. The rest of it, for me, I understand the traffic. I understand the future mitigations. Comfortable with the, with the stormwater and all of that work. And I don't know if other board members don't have the same concern. Just for me, I'm struggling with the visual resources one.
Well, I, I understand that, Lori. I'm kind of struggling. I'm thinking that this, that it's too big for that, for those two lots. And on top of that, I haven't seen anybody address making a left hand turn onto Palin Road going towards Hopewell out of this place across three lanes of traffic. I think that that is going to be a dangerous situation, which is going to lead to many accidents in that area, even after the proposed improvements come in.
Yeah, I, I see that. And I think the, the issue there is that the, the traffic study and, and the feedback from our, our traffic professionals didn't support that concern. I, I share the concern having had to navigate that intersection many times, but.
But I, I actually posed the question and the, the traffic studies did indicate that it was feasible for that to take place. So, I mean, I don't know how we override the professionals on it. It might not be a matter of agreeing with them, but they did, both our, our traffic professional and the traffic study they had done, it met the requirements.
And I believe it was also approved by the county, since that is a county highway, right?
And the only other thing I did want to say is I don't really particularly look at these buildings as part of that community behind it. I know that there is this slight attachment through, you know, that emergency accessway, but I really look at them as buildings on 52, not buildings as part of that, that community. I just, there, there's no accessibility for them to drive into there unless they got out onto 52 and back onto Palin Road and into their community. And the only other way would be by foot. And I just myself and just my own, my own opinion is I really look at these, these buildings as buildings on 52, not part of the community.
Yeah, I guess my, my concern isn't, isn't other, and I know, I know, Ed, you said the size. I mean, our, our zoning allows a three story building and that's what is being proposed. So I, from a, from a size perspective, I just, I just think there are, you could build a three story building that looks a little more residential. This for me just doesn't have an appearance of residential. That, that's really where I'm struggling a little bit with, with the visual impact. To me, it could have been a lesser impact if the style of the building was a little more in keeping with, with the more residential or pastoral kind of environment. But I totally agree. It is on a state road and, and it's, it's the right place for a development like that.
And it fits, it fits the markers. And I, you know, I think the aesthetics are, I guess, part of other people's, how they feel about things. You know, some people want to wear a, you know, a black belt, another one, wear a white belt or however you want to say it, but I think it's a little more modern day architecture. But I just, like I said, I just feel like it's part of that 52 corridor, not part of that, that community. Although I know that the residents of the community felt much differently. I just really think of this as like a project that really is on that corridor 52. So, I mean, I think just as we advance into, you know, into the years, and architecture may change. I don't think it's like this glass prism building, but it's something in between. So I think it's just sometimes embracing, because like you said, you look down the street at that orthopedic associates. I don't think anybody ever would have thought that somebody would have put up that type of facade on a building in that area. But it's not like it, it sticks out like a sore thumb. I think it's aesthetically pleasing. You know, and probably an upgrade or a turn towards modern day exteriors on facilities. So.
Yeah, maybe that's really what it is. It just feels much more urban than what we've really done here before. So it's, it's fair.
Yeah. I mean, you look at some of the bigger, even the, the adult community that was proposed to us totally different, you know, feeling, look to it. And like you said, probably softer aesthetics. But I think sometimes too, it's like, you know, little bit of a matter of opinion, because at least the colors and stuff were still blending. But I still felt that just more representative of a little more modern day look at what some of these buildings are starting to look like.
You know, I, I think Richard really hit on it. It's, it's beauties in the eye of the beholder. I must tell you that I for one, from the very first day I saw it, which was at the firehouse, when the first presentation was made, thought it looked great. I really, I find it to be an attractive project. So, you know, everybody, everybody has their own taste. I think what we're, what we're looking to try to find is, is if, is we're suggesting that there is no significant adverse visual impact to the neighborhood characters surrounding uses. And.
I understand. And John, again, I wanted to make sure there wasn't anything in the prior approval that required a different architectural look or facade. And if there was, then it would be a fair comment to say this one probably should have been in keeping with that. Michelle said we've done that research. There's nothing to that effect in the, in the approvals or in the prior plans. I'm comfortable from that perspective. I think from my, from my perspective, the only other thing I would just say is Michelle, and maybe this is already on the plan, but I think you looked at the landscape plan. Is there a requirement that if something fails on the landscape, this would be treated like a commercial plan where trees would have to be replaced with a commensurate type of planting or something along those lines? So this isn't a once and done in case those trees don't succeed on the berm?
There's nothing in the resolution currently, in the draft resolution certainly written, but it's not to say that we couldn't add a condition and put, you know, sometimes what we do on commercial is we, we have a five year out. If it's a If it's a site plan and the landscaping is part of the site plan, then it does have to be replaced if it fails because it's supposed to be on the actual site plan. But we also have conditions that require, um, you know, landscaping to be continuously, you know, over monitored over like five years, for example. And if anything fails, assuming that after five years, if it's established, it's not going to fail for a long time.
Do we have them post a bond or anything that would be, you know, binding for them just in case? You know, as a surety for us to, to make sure that if in fact that did happen, that there was that surety there for them to have to replace it. Or if, if the town had to step in that, that cost was, you know, mitigated through the bond.
That can be a condition added to the resolution.
Yeah, I, I just, I, because I think that's a significant, I understand the people behind, you know, the neighbors to the rear of the property have some very strong concerns about that. And I, and I would too, but I just feel that if they've made adequate adjustment for that to be covered and for it to be bonded with surety so that, you know, if there was some failure of plantings back there, that they were, you know, forced to be replaced, you know, regardless.
So Michelle, can I just clarify? Because I, I support what Richard is saying, but is that something that goes on a site plan for this site? So it's in perpetuity? Or is that something that we have to put in a resolution? I'm saying, does the resolution have to say it needs to go on the site plan so that all the, all the landscaping remains as proposed? Or does it go with the five-year plan like you're, you were saying you do for some, for some commercial sites?
I believe it's up to the, the planning board and how they want, want it to be written. You know, I, I defer to Michael on this. I'm not sure how they would handle a residential multifamily project. I suppose you could, you could insist on landscaping being kept in perpetuity on a, on the, on the plan, just as you would with a commercial site plan, I suppose.
I just would hate to see that we went through all this extensive planning with them, then to have those trees either, you know, die or be cut down or, or fail or whatever it may be. Because I think it was a very big part of a buffer between the, the building itself and the, the neighbors with the issues in the rear of it. So I just wish, you know, or I think, Michael, you could kind of comment as to how it should be structured for that to have some connectivity, either through bond or.
So, so I think a bond's appropriate if the board would like, because this would, could be seen as a mitigation under SEACRA for any sort of impact to the view sheds.
Yeah. I mean, I, I would think that that would be important because that's a, it's a fairly big expense if it had to be dealt with in the future.
And what, would the amount of that bond be something that could be determined then by the town planner? Michael, or how would we establish an amount?
Unless, um, either Scott or Michelle has an idea offhand what the landscaping costs roughly, um, that can be determined later on.
Yeah.
Yeah. Or even that specific, you know, those specific.
We can do it in amount not less than, and then it can.
Yeah.
Okay.
Would it have to be a bond or could it just be held in violation of their site plan? And, you know, if they didn't comply, you know, it takes that route of, you know.
I guess I'm also thinking though, pass that Scott, like if it, you know, the project gets done and, you know, two, three, four, or five years from now, they cut the trees down or they.
Well, it'd still be a violation of the site plan.
But what would be the, what would force their hand? You know what I mean? Because.
Well, they'd be, they'd be given, maybe MC could comment, but they'd be given a violation. If they don't comply, I guess they get a court appearance.
Okay. And then, I mean, I guess ultimately then if they appeared and they, you know, paid a fine, would that be forcing them though to replace the trees or just paying a fine? Like, I don't know the procedure.
A fine doesn't remedy a violation.
Okay, so.
It's not a remedy.
Okay.
I mean, Michael, you want to speak to that?
I think having a bond in place would accomplish the board's objectives more than just waiting to violate them.
But how long are you going to have a bond in place? For how many years?
Ten years.
What happens after ten years? Then we go to the violation mode?
Yeah. Hope that the landscaping would last for ten years. And I, I think we would see signs that it fails within ten years as well.
I, it might. I guess I also was just thinking if they were to do something to significantly change it. But I think the ten-year mark is, is pretty fair. And then like Scott said, then it goes to the violation mode.
But I appreciate the discussion. I am comfortable with a bond, understanding that that kind of protects that additional view shed and, and the shielding for the residents behind the buildings. I'm comfortable.
Yeah.
I don't know if any other members of the board had other items, but I'm, I'm good with that one. Thank you, John.
Is there any other discussion? I think we do have a motion and a second, but we can still have discussion before we vote on the neg deck.
Did, did we get a motion and a second?
Did we have a motion second? Somebody remind me.
No.
Oh, we did not. Okay. I'm sorry. So, I mean, I have a motion to approve the neg deck.
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Thank you, Richard. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed?
No.
Okay. Carry. All right. And we have a resolution and there are a couple of additional conditions that we may have to work on just a bit once I get to. Resolution of site plan and special permit approval for Stone Ridge Commons Apartments at Route fifty-two and Palin Road, Hopeful Junction, New York. The applicant has applied to the Town of East Fishkill Planning Board for a transitional zone special permit and site plan approval to allow the development of fifty-one apartments in two three-story multifamily apartment buildings, one hundred and five parking spaces and related improvements on six point six five acres. Whereas the proposed project meets the conditions of the transitional zone special permit. Whereas the proposed project was approved by the town's architectural review council and the planning board held public hearings for the Stone Ridge Commons special permit and site plan on September eighth, twenty twenty, November seventeenth, twenty twenty-one, January nineteenth, twenty twenty-one, and March ninth, twenty twenty-one. And had an additional ten-day public comment period was provided after the close of the public hearing on March ninth, twenty twenty-one. Whereas the applicant will construct a sidewalk along the project sites of Route fifty-two frontage and make a contribution to a future sidewalk connection to John Jay High School in the amount of, do we have of one hundred thousand dollars, excuse me. And whereas the action is considered an unlisted action under SEACRA. Whereas the planning board declared their intent to be lead agency on March ninth, nineteen, twenty twenty-one. Whereas a negative declaration was adopted by the planning board on May eighteenth, twenty twenty-one. Now therefore be resolved, the planning board approves a special permit and site plan titled Stone Ridge Commons, prepared by day in Stokosa Engineering PC dated September twenty-seventh, two thousand and nineteen, and last reviewed April nineteenth, twenty twenty-one with the following conditions. Condition one satisfactory resolution of the comments in the CPL site plan memo. Number two, site ingress and egress to be shown on the site plan as approved by the New York State Department of Transportation. Number three, approval of a full sweep by the town's consulting engineer. Number four, applicant to clean out the existing stormwater pond on the property. Number five, approval from Duchess County Department of Behavioral and Community Health. Number six, coordinate with town on water and sewer extensions to Palin Road. Number seven, prior to construction applicant to install berm, prior to construction, applicant to install berm and landscape screening between the parking lots behind Building Two and the adjacent residential lot. Sidewalk contribution to the town in the amount of one hundred thousand dollars for a future sidewalk connection to John Jay High School. Recreation fee in the amount of two hundred four thousand dollars. Number ten, an escrow in the amount of seven thousand five hundred dollars to be replenished as needed for an environmental monitor for the duration of onsite construction activities related to stormwater management and erosion control. Number eleven, this is a new one, contribution to the Route fifty-two traffic improvement district in an amount to be determined. And number twelve.
I have, I have some wording. A bond to be determined, a bond in an amount to be determined by the town planner and town engineer to guarantee landscaping for ten years.
Excellent. Are there any other conditions to be added?
Michelle, did we also need to add something that we, that the landscaping needs to be maintained in perpetuity on the site plan? I understand the bond is for ten years, but did we also need something to say that? I don't know if it's already.
I think it's, it would be assumed as a result of the approval of the, of the site plan. Is that correct, Michael?
Okay.
I would think so, but if Lori's more comfortable putting another phrase in there, I don't think it's harmful or changed the intent of the resolution.
So further.
Landscaping to be maintained as approved on the site plan unless otherwise, you know, determined by the town.
Otherwise amended.
Yeah, okay. I'll, I'll add something to that fact landscaping.
And then do we, do we want to strike condition eight or strike the paragraph that already referenced the contribution? Up about, you have a whereas that talks about the contribution and then a condition for the John Jay sidewalk?
Sure, I can clean that up.
Okay. Good catch.
And then one other question. During the public hearings, there was, I thought there was agreement that the applicant was going to have somebody on site with the construction team that would work with the neighbors if they had a concern. Did we, did we establish anything along those lines? Or is that something that needs to be done through the applicant and the residents?
I think Mr. O'Rourke mentioned that the, that the developer actually was a man who intended to be pretty hands-on during the construction progress and would be available to people, should there be any issues that came up? So I, so I don't think we get to talk about any requirements.
Yes, forgive me, Mr. Chairman. I didn't mean to interrupt you, but I, I do recall that Mr. Lund did state that he intends to be actively involved on the site and, and try to be as responsive as possible in connection with any comments that were made by the residents.
I think Lori, there was a, there was a request that perhaps one of the community members be a liaison during the construction site meetings, like the pre-meetings for the construction and, and sort of be the liaison between the developer and the homeowners. I think there was.
Semblance of order. Because if the, you know, they have one person and then the developer has a single person as opposed to getting this barrage of people that come at them every which way. Probably better to have a point person on both sides.
I, I think that was his intention.
Okay.
Yeah. I think he's shown every indication up to this point of trying to cooperate with people who have approached him and worked with them on landscaping and, and that sort of stuff. So.
I guess the only question would be who would be the point person that's going to be for the people in the development? Was there one single voice that sent.
Hired attorney.
To represent them? Is it the attorney that they hired or?
Oh, I thought there was a gentleman that said he had some experience with that and I apologize. I don't remember his name.
I think we leave it to them to sort it out though.
I think during the pre-constru-, I mean, Scott, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but there's usually some sort of pre-construction meeting and at that time we can establish a, a local contact or a, a neighborhood contact that can work with the developer to be the liaison.
Okay. Any other conditions or comments? If not, be it further resolved within five business days of the adoption of this resolution, the chair or other duly authorized member of the planning board should cause a copy of this resolution to be filed with the town clerk and a copy sent to the applicant owner. Could I have a motion approving this resolution?
So moved.
Thank you, Richard.
I'll second.
Second from Lori. Thank you. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed?
No.
No.
So Ed and Chris? Is that correct?
Yes.
Any abstentions?
Oh, yes. Craig, Arco.
And Craig abstains. The motion carries. And so it's approved. I'm sorry, I voted yes as well. So.
Thank you.
That wraps that up. Thank you, Mr. O'Rourke. We appreciate your input and assistance through this process and is there any other business to be brought before the planning board this evening?
Thank you.
Thank you, Amy. If no other business, I'll accept a motion to adjourn.
I'll move.
Don't move.
Yeah, and Lori's second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay. Hey, thank you, everybody. We will undoubtedly see you in person next month. So thanks, thanks for all of your patience through this whole process.
Thanks, John.
Thank you.